Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I was bound to turn this started on time today. Mr. Harco would have epiphanies if I hadn't. So, that be the case. I appreciate you coming to our meeting today. I have a relatively, um, relatively good agenda. And we'll let it out of it, Mr. Harco will say as quick as he can. Fred, we start the meeting, I'd like to ask, um, Mr. Smith, Mr. Woodman, lead indication. And Mr. Black will listen to say, please.
I pray. My grace is heavenly, Father, Lord, we all before this meeting to acknowledge you and thank you for all of your many blessings. Lord, we thank you for this great country that we live in. Thank you for all the blessings and freedoms that are ours to enjoy. Heavenly Father, we thank you for, uh, the keeping our safety workers and emergency personnel and Sheriff's Office and all the people that were out in the weather over the last few days. Say, Heavenly Father, we pray for the situation down in Buck's Pocket. Lord, you know all the needs in that situation. We just ask a special prayer for, uh, that situation there, Lord. We, uh, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve the people of our communities. We pray that you would give us guidance and of your divine wisdom and the decisions that we are, are to make for our constituents and ask that you would always lead in guidance. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business today is review and consideration of minutes of our last meeting. By that time each of you should have had the opportunity to review the minutes of the, uh, February the sixteenth, uh, fourth, uh, whatever our last meeting was. Are there any additions or corrections that you can make of minutes of the meeting? During, uh, any kind of motion may be approved as read.
I should approve.
But, Mr. Westbrook, second by. Second by Mr. Woodman. All in favor, signify the same aye. Vote the like sign. Motion is carried. The new business, first order of business is council on the agenda, Ms. McHenry.
Good morning. We did get all our paperwork from Albot last, well, Friday. Allowed us to purchase two buses for the transportation program. So, we're working on the paperwork now. And wanted to go ahead and get permission for this fiscal year for all transfer, or all travel to transportation meetings. Do I need to tell you what cities or can I just get standing permission for all out-of-county travel for transportation?
Generally, then, do you have a list of those? Just go ahead and just.
Okay. Um, we have, once a year in Huntsville in April, we take three staff to that. One training each year in April, and it's going to be in hell on this year. One staff's going to that and stay overnight. And then we have one in South Alabama in May for two staff with, uh, four nights in hotel. And then around Thanksgiving, we'll have one, a three-day event that we travel back until the day of our soul.
Any kind of motion we approve the, uh, travel for, for organization for that group of your, most, uh, approved organization members. Second. Motion by Mr. Wood, Westbrook, second by Mr. Wood. All in favor, signify the same aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
And then council on aging travel. Sorry, I should run this together. Um, we've got, uh, four times or more a year that we take our advisory board to Huntsville. And one trip will be to Montgomery. The Montgomery one's going to be in April. And then we have Fun Fest, that we want to take a busload or more of people to, um, that's held by Tarkog, and that'll be in May. Uh, we have Everbridge Training that's coming up. I've got an employee that's going to that. And then our staff's been asked to hold a booth at, uh, Northeast College that's barely over the line. Um, for their upcoming, uh, Protecting Your Identity Online for people ages fifty plus. Do we have permission for those?
Any kind of motion to approve the request for travel out of county? Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Black, second by. Mr. Westbrook, all in favor, signify the same aye. Vote the like sign. Motion is carried.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's sum the agenda with the Sheriff's Office person today. Mr. Smith.
Good morning. I don't have a lot, just two new hires and a transfer. For the two new hires, I ask that we hire Tiffany Bartstall as a full-time corrections officer to replace Giles Phillips. And the second is to hire Zachary Davis as a full-time corrections officer to fill a vacant position.
Do I have a motion to, uh, approve the hire that is presented?
Not too bad.
With second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Westbrook, second, and by Mr. Black for approve the hire that is presented. All in favor, signify the same aye. Vote the like sign. Motion is carried. Thank you.
The transfer will be Donald Morgan. He's a full-time corrections officer to our road crew, which will be a full-time position. That will replace Merlin White, and I'm waiting for a time through.
Motion to approve the transfer of Mr. Morgan. Second. By Mr., motion by Mr. Westbrook, second. Excuse me. Motion by Mr. Wood and second by Mr. Westbrook to approve the transfer of Mr. Morgan. The road crew, those, they signify the same aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
It's all handled.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next thing that is on the agenda is the emergency management, uh, report.
Morning, gentlemen. I've got a, uh, a few handouts for you. Take one of your past ones down, please. Uh, while you're ahead, if it's pleasing to you, I'd like to go in reverse order on the agenda items, if that's okay. Uh, over the weekend, you're, as you're aware, over the past week, we've had a immense amount of rain. We had, uh, we had upwards of eight inches of rainfall since the eighteenth. Uh, we fortunately don't see a lot of flooding events here because we have, uh, we have excellent, uh, well, uh, unlike our neighbors to the east and to the west who are, who are dealing with a lot of flooding. What we do have is, uh, we have a lot of issues of, uh, of, uh, road subsidence, uh, that we've noticed. Uh, working with, uh, Mr. Brawls and the, uh, Road Department to, to effectively respond to those. But the biggest thing that we've had, uh, this, this week was, obviously, as you're all aware of, was the suspected drowning, uh, at Buck's Pocket. We've had response crews at Buck's Pocket since, uh, since Friday evening. Around eight-thirty Friday evening, there was a vehicle, uh, that was occupied by three, uh, three people uh, that tried to cross the bridge there at the bottom of Buck's Pocket on Carroll one-seventy-three. Uh, the, the roadway was, was highly impacted by rushing, uh, rapid water. And the vehicle was swept from the, uh, from the roadside and ended up into the creek. Uh, two of the, uh, passengers of the vehicle, um, were able to escape the vehicle and were later rescued by emergency response, uh, agencies. Uh, but, uh, but one person is still missing and is suspected of drowning. We're trying to locate the vehicle still. Uh, I've been to Buck's Pocket twice today already. Uh, once to, uh, attend the, the briefing for the recovery effort that, that staff backed up today. Uh, there was a brief lapse in, uh, in coverage because of the severe weather event that occurred Friday and Saturday. Uh, the, the commander, who is Michael Jeffries, he is the superintendent for the, uh, State Park Region, Northern Region. Uh, and he suspended the operations due to the threat of severe weather and to allow the water to recede a little bit because it was decided that, uh, the operation was transitioning from a response to a recovery operation. So, recovery operations have started as of effective this morning at oh-eight-hundred hours. Uh, we, in that response, we've had multiple organizations from different counties. As you're all aware, uh, Buck's Pocket is a, is a culmination of three different counties. You have Jackson, Marshall, and DeKalb that all come together. And then you also have the State Park that is right there in the middle of it. So, uh, this was, uh, this was, uh, probably one of the best examples of the importance of emergency management in that, uh, over the course of the, the past, um, three or four days, uh, the emergency management agencies from all three counties have been coordinating together with all the response organizations that are there, uh, responding to the event. And I want to kind of, uh, give a brief summary of who all those response agencies are from our county. I, I, like I said, we have response agencies from DeKalb, Jackson, and Marshall County, all there. Uh, but we've got, uh, from, from our county, we had the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office, the DeKalb County Fire Association, the DeKalb County Rescue Squad Association, Fort Payne Fire and Rescue. Uh, Mr. Westbrook, who, uh, sits on your, uh, on the commission, uh, was there all day Saturday and most of the day, uh, most of the night, Friday night, responding to the, the initial call, trying to locate this vehicle. Uh, along with, uh, EMA, G.I.S., Mr. Austin, uh, Austin Reed has provided us with G.I.S. mapping of the, of some of the subsidence that we've had and also Buck's Pocket area. And Mr. Crowe also provided his services along with, uh, the drone that he has uh, to be able to fly, uh, some of the creek to look for that vehicle and try to bring that situation to resolution. Uh, our roads and, and I'll, I know, uh, Mr. Brawls will be coming up here after me, uh, but just kind of give you a recap real quick about the roads that we have impacted. The County Wade's Gap, Tuckwater Gap, and Canteroade, uh, eight-thirty-five are all closed due, due to land subsidence. Uh, the roads are beginning to, uh, the road were beginning, beginning to decay up, out, out from under the, uh, the surface. And so therefore, Mr. Brawls felt that it was, it was necessary to close those to protect any, uh, would-be passersby. Uh, also, we did have one other issue on Canteroade eight-thirty-five when the ground subsided there. Uh, on Canteroade eight-thirty-five, it did impact a natural gas pipeline. And, uh, Mr. Brawls luckily had, had people on the scene already. And they notified us that we were able to get, or they notified D.C. Gas that we were able to coordinate to ensure that, uh, that didn't become a, a significant issue and it was resolved, uh, rather, rather quickly. So, do you have any questions? I know that's a lot. From action.
We appreciate the, uh, efforts of everyone involved in the, uh, terrible situation in Buck's Pocket. Yes, we. We hope that the situation is resolved, personally.
Yes, sir. That, that's what we're, we're, we're hoping that, uh, that situation is resolved very quickly. Uh, in line with that, we have, uh, we had a declaration, a local state of emergency. Mr. Harco was able to sign a, uh, local state of emergency, uh, Friday, uh, Saturday night. You have it in front of you, I believe. Uh, and all I ask, uh, I'd like to ask you to approve, uh, that and ratify that, uh, state of emergency for DeKalb County. Uh, the governor also issued a state of emergency for the state, uh, Saturday evening around eight o'clock.
I'll entertain a motion that, uh, this commission, uh, approve the declaration of a local state of emergency effective ten o'clock, February twenty-thirty thousand, that's.
So moved.
By Mr. Wood and second by Mr. Westbrook. All in favor, signify the same aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, sir. Continue.
Uh, the other thing is, uh, going back, going back to your, one of your other handouts, Mr. Reed was able to provide us with some visual, uh, satellite imagery of the areas, the roadway areas that were damaged. And if you want to flip through that, basically it goes through the, uh, the things that I had, I had covered. But, uh, he was able to provide us with some aerial imagery of the areas that were impacted in the county. Uh, the other, the last thing on the agenda item is the, uh, emergency operations plan update. And what, uh, what this is, is that anytime we have a change on the commission or anytime we have a, an event that occurs that necessitates that we do an update or we change the plan because it's a, it's a cyclical cycle. So, we, anytime there is something that needs to be changed, we change the plan, we approve the plan, we exercise it, then we implement it. Uh, and so we're at that because we've had two city commissioners that have changed in the recent couple of years. And so it is, it is time again to update, uh, this, uh, this, uh, letter of obligation which you have in front of you. Uh, and, uh, would ask that you, uh, sign off and approve.
Any kind of motion to that effect or just?
Uh, I need, I need a motion and a resolution.
I entertain a motion that we, uh, authorize a resolution to make an amendment to the emergency operations plan that, uh, clarifies the, uh, county participants in the plan. So moved. Enter a second.
Second.
Uh, by Mr. Wood for a second. If I mention Black, all in favor, signify the same aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Any question?
I don't really have a question, just a little comment from EMA and all involved and, uh, and, and especially in keeping me updated on, on everything that's going on this week, you know, and all that y'all, we all were doing. And, uh, of course, this emergency. If nobody's actually looked at that, that is a very in-depth plan and, uh, and, uh, y'all put a lot of work into it and I appreciate everything that y'all, y'all do for our citizens.
There, there is a lot that goes into it. I mean, today, uh, we have responders from tele, as far away as Telkis County. We've got some of our devices down. We've got Fort Payne Fire Rescue's rope team going down to, to support that event. What they're doing is they're, they're using some of our devices to try to locate the vehicle underwater because the water's still perched and it could, it could seep into the water passing a couple of inches. And so, uh, we've got, uh, about one hundred volunteers down there right now, uh, trying to bring this situation to a resolution.
The level, the level of cooperation is just astounding. And as just private citizens, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Poe. Any more questions? Thanks, sir.
Uh, next on the agenda, Mr. Brawls, uh, make the road part.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Posey has stated, we've had a busy, uh, week, a little bit of a week. Uh, we've, uh, had some issues, as he said, dealing with floods. Actually have five roads in the county at this time that are still, uh, remain closed. The three, uh, that he has mentioned, Wade Gap, Tuckwater Gap, and Canteroade eight-thirty-five, closed due to the sliding areas on, uh, the roads. Also have Canteroade thirty-nine, which is, uh, south of Collinsville, have a bridge crossing Willoughby. The water has just got down below the bridge, have a crew down there now rebuilding some log jams. Did a little bit of approach work. That road probably will be open by the end of the day, today. Uh, Canteroade three-eight-six, south of Kilpatrick, have another bridge, uh, that, uh, his water has receded enough, but, uh, the water has torn the deck off of this bridge. So, that road will remain closed till we have time to put a new deck on it. Crew has, uh, searched the creek banks a little bit, but have not been able to find the old deck. We cable these down to the bridge beams on one side, on the, the upper side. And it allows the, the deck will just kind of float. And I guess it got so, uh, so high and the water moving so swift, it just, uh, must have torn the, the deck apart and swept it away. But, uh, we'll have to replace that. That road will remain closed until we can get that done. That's probably, uh, you're looking at a couple of weeks at least on down the road before we do that. We'll have to, uh, check the, the structure, make sure there's no damage to it before we, uh, go, go ahead and put a new deck on it. Those are, roads are closed right now. The Three Mountain Gaps will be closed, uh, for an indefinite period of time. Anytime you're dealing with this, you're dealing with a, uh, very, uh, touchy situation. And we've learned some hard lessons over the years. You don't just go into these places and start digging out. Uh, you have to, uh, do some testing. You have to formulate a plan before you go in and start excavating material. If you don't, uh, sometimes there's no end to, we learned this on the Colton Gap. The engineer we had at that time sent a crew of people up there to start digging it out. And about two or three years later, we finally got a road put back, uh. So, you know, you have to be very careful. You don't just go in and start doing something on these. And Canteroade eight-thirty-five, actually, the gas company is still there right now trying to repair their gas main. Uh, there's also a water main that comes down the mountain. I've talked to Ben a little bit. We're going to be trying to, uh, start formulating a plan of some kind, uh, later on this week. Uh, but those two utilities will, uh, probably have to be rerouted somehow because, uh, the area that's sliding includes the area that these utilities are buried in. And once you start removing the material that's sliding, uh, you're going to expose those and you expose most of the water main and it will blow out. So, uh, that's gonna, that's gonna be a very hard, uh, area to fix. The utilities were not there, it would still be hard to do because it's such a large area. But with those utilities there, uh, it's gonna, um, it only increases the problem that you're going to have to deal with when you start working on those. I've mentioned too, uh, Mr. Posey had mentioned the, the situation in Buck's Pocket that hits us directly. The young man who's missing, his father actually works at the Road Department. And it, uh, it really, uh, it really works hard on you. I can't even imagine what he's going through right now. But, uh, would appreciate y'all continuing to pray for that situation, however it turns out. It, uh, it does not look real good right now, but, uh, we just, I, I hope at some point they can have some kind of closure on this situation, however it turns out. I don't really have much else to, uh, thanks alone. We, uh, I do, would mention this too. Through this whole system, this event actually began, uh, a week ago Saturday. Is when the, the, the really heavy rain, uh, started and it had, uh, strong winds off and on during that whole time. And we have a lot of trees on the ground, a lot of them that we've only had time to cut them back and kind of get the road up and back up. We have, uh, a large crew right now out on Canteroade eighty-nine, uh, just south of Minton. We're probably going to be out there for a week, possibly more, uh, removing, uh, trees that have blown down across the road. I haven't seen somebody out there every day since last Saturday to cut some trees. I had sent some people out there the other night and, uh, while they were cutting trees, they were still falling. Uh, they first dispatched the fire department and a tree almost fell on some of them while they were cutting one. And the fire chief pulled his men out. And, uh, I sent some guys out and they, they cut their way through as far as they could go. We got to some power lines down the road. And then they had to cut their way out, going back out. So, it, it looks like a tornado has come through out there, a long section of it. But, uh, that's probably, hopefully, if we get any kind of, uh, declaration, that will be included in it because there's quite a bit of that. And it's countywide, it's, it's not, uh, not anything like what we're working on, uh, south of Minton. It's, uh, we have trees all over the county that have fallen of a cause of winds and heavy rains. It's kind of, uh, kept us from doing any, just routine maintenance. Uh, we're in the process of cycling out trucks. Still have one patch truck, uh, functional right now. I'm going to have to take it off the road this week. Still do not have any new dump trucks. Don't have a single one yet. So, I don't know, it's, uh, it's gonna be, uh, we have the, the, the last date to have these trucks is the auction is May, or March the twelfth. So, we're gonna probably be working seven days a week, trying to get these trucks ready whenever I get the new ones. And cannot get any explanation from anybody about what the major holdup is. I've got some suspicions about some things, but I can't, uh, can't get any proof right now of it. But, uh, we're gonna have to, uh, do things different when we order trucks next year. We're gonna, there's gonna be some people who are gonna bypass because I know they're involved in it and they're at fault that I will to, uh, admit any, but they are definitely part of the problem. So, we're gonna have to do something to bypass that. We can't do this every year.
Yeah, with contingency plan and the event that the trucks don't come in before they're supposed to go.
All we can do is, is pull some out of the option. That would be all the only thing we would be able to do. And I sure hope it don't come to that. Uh, as you know, we already have price guarantees on all of our trucks. But, uh, worst-case scenario, we could have to pull some of our dump trucks out. Now, I have the four road tractors and three cabin chassis on the yard. I think our tags are ordered. Uh, we should be getting them maybe, uh, hopefully in the next few days. We'll be able to put those trucks to, to work. We could have to, to pull out some dump trucks. I sure hope we don't, but it, it could come to that. I think the auction company would be willing to work with us. They told me they'll do whatever the thing they can do. They've already pushed their auction back, uh, a week later than what it normally is because, uh, we're not the only county that's dealing with this, but, uh, right now, I'm only one. Our county's the only one that matters to me. That's about all my hat over here, but if you have any questions, I could go ahead and I'd have to vote for you.
Any comments, gentlemen?
Mr. Brawls, I'll just, uh, say, I, I do appreciate, uh, everything that the Road Department and, uh, did this weekend and, uh, last week, uh, during all of the issues that we've had. Uh, you, you mentioned several issues here, major issues that were, concerns that we've had in, in road closures and stuff like that. But, uh, you know, the, the kind of the unseen things that's happened out there, we, we really keep a number on, on how much damage that has actually been done. I know for, for the past month or so, you know, my, my road crew in District One has been, you know, working a lot of watch house and, and, and places on dirt roads that, uh, you know, had some really bad potholes and, and stuff like that, just to try to get them a little bit more passable and, and to help the folks out a little bit on, on those roads. But I'm sure that after all this, man, most of all that's been worked that they've done in the last, uh, month is probably enough to be done again. Uh, and, uh, unfortunately, we just don't have the resources or the, uh, the manpower to, to get a, a whole thing here of. The, the, the mountain gaps are, are, are a big issue. Uh, and, and, and really, you know, as it stands right now, we are hoping that, uh, that maybe there will be some type of funds, emergency funds, uh, set up for this, but we don't have a guarantee, uh, on that. And I talked to Mr. Ledbetter, uh, yesterday. Uh, he's, he's, uh, very involved and, and is willing to help us in any way, uh, at state level, uh, if there is some fund paid available to, so that we can, uh, uh, try to, try to get started on these, repairing some of these, these, these problems. But I've gotten multiple calls and, and some emails about, uh, you know, the Tuckwater Gap and the Wade's Gap. Uh, and, uh, you know, some of the manning that we, uh, get these fixed, but I, I just won't, uh, you know, totally understand right now. We simply do not have the money to fix all these problems right now. Uh, I, I, you know, we're, we're working through the process to see if there's funds available. And, and once we kind of work through that process and, and kind of understand exactly what the cost is going to be to fix these and some of the, some of those situations, uh, you know, we'll have to determine and, and, and look at a priority level and, and determine, uh, our priority. Uh, but this brings up a, a whole different, or it brings up a, uh, a discussion, uh, that, uh, that the whole state is having right now, and that is infrastructure, uh, funding. Just, uh, I believe tomorrow and maybe Thursday and Friday, the governor, the society is going to be, uh, coming out with her infrastructure plan. There's been, uh, a lot of talk about that lately. We don't really know what that plan exactly is going to be yet. Uh, but, uh, we have to understand that infrastructure is the foundation of our state and our county economy. Uh, it, it's what everything, all of our economy is built on, is built on our infrastructure. Uh, we have, uh, you know, without infrastructure, the economy can't grow. And it's important that our economy continues to grow so that, uh, the, we can continue to fund the benefits uh, and, and the, and the services that we provide our, our, our citizens. As, as inflation happens and as things continue to increase in cost, uh, you know, we've got to have an economy that's growing to be able to build a tax base off of. So, infrastructure is the, is the foundation of that. And right now, DeKalb County and most other counties in this state, the infrastructure is in a, in a state of crisis. And that's all you can say, it's just a state of crisis. Uh, we, as most everybody knows, I've said this many times, many of us around this table has said this many times. We haven't had any increase in, in infrastructure, uh, uh, since nineteen ninety-two. And infrastructure, uh, funding since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, and, and since that time, you know, road construction costs have went up over ten fold, uh, in, in that, that time. So, if, just to kind of give an example of that, if you were paying fifty dollars a month for your cable bill in nineteen ninety-two, if, if cable. if if cable costs had increased like road construction costs, you'd be paying five hundred dollars a month right now. I don't think very many people would be, that most people would be putting up antennas again if that happened. Uh, and that's kind of the situation we're in. And just imagine if you didn't get a raise since nineteen ninety-two. I I'm I'm for sure most people would have to do away with their their cable. And we're we're kind of in a situation where we just uh, you know, our roads, our infrastructure is regressing at this point. It's been regressing uh uh for a while now, but we are rapidly deteriorating now because of our inability to be able to the past years to be able to do the proper maintenance on our on our infrastructure. And we don't even, we don't even talk about bridges hardly because uh and and we've got, I don't know how many bridges. Dan might know for sure, but I don't know how many bridges we've got in the county, but we 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 don't even have a plan to to replace bridges. But we we don't, we don't have the funds available to even consider that. We have spent all our funds just trying to to keep the the roads intact that we've got right now. You know, the um, to give you an example, six years ago when I uh was elected, we had one durapatch unit that served the whole county. And uh and uh that 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 unit was used to to patch potholes, you know, all over this county. And uh now, because of necessity, we've actually got three of those those units that run full time. They run pretty much all the time. Once something odd is is happening, we have to pull them in off of them. Both durapatch machines run all the time. And just to be honest with you, it'd be great if we had enough. We could, we we can keep up with it with it now. And that that that's just kind of the, you know, example of how quickly uh the infrastructure is 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 really falling apart in in this county and in this state. Uh, and it's and it's simply an economic situation where it is uh it it's it's funding, it's it's the lack of funding and the inability to 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 be able to do what what it's needed to do. You know, the south is a hot commodity. The southern area of the United States is a hot commodity right now. Of course, you know, we've got, we've got low property taxes and 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 then most of the states in in the south, we've got low cost of living. Uh, and and then we've still got workers in this area that are willing to work, you know. So, and uh, you know, companies and corporations are looking to move industry into the south uh because they because of those factors. Uh, we're we're a hot commodity right now. But the one of the number one things that they look at when they're looking at that that area, come into is the infrastructure of that area. And we are falling way behind the other uh states and other counties in those states in in this this area. And it's very important, infrastructure is very important to be able to attract those businesses and to attract those economies. The American Petroleum Institute does a uh puts out numbers on gas taxes per state every year. And it kind of ranks each each state on on where we're at on on the amount of gas taxes that are charged. Alabama is forty-first in the country uh on on gas taxes. Uh, now, let me tell you something. We should be proud of that because we've accomplished a lot. There's only nine other states that have less that give less in gas taxes than than what it is. So, we've accomplished a lot uh with the, you know, being forty-first in in the in the country. But the people that we're competing with, our main competitors is Tennessee, Georgia, and Florida. Tennessee's thirty-first, Georgia's twenty-first, and Florida's ninth. We are way behind them. We're way behind them. And it is, it it's time, you know, uh, we're losing out because of our infrastructure. And 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 as it's deteriorating as fast as it is right now, if we don't do something now, our kids, the next generation, will not have the opportunities that the surrounding states will have uh in economics. And so, we won't be able to keep our young people here in this these counties in the United States. They'll go to Tennessee or they'll go to Georgia, they'll go to Florida, they'll go somewhere else. They'll have to to be able to get a job and to raise their family. And that's not what we want. So, you know, I would just encourage everybody to uh to consider the governor's plan when she comes out with it. Uh, to 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 look at it not just as a uh as a burden, but to look at it as an investment in our communities, in our counties, in our states, in our community, in our town, an investment in our in our future. And I'm sorry, I kind of have one window, don't do that with with my
That's all right.
explanation, but uh but uh, you know, um, we we, it's it's time for something to be done. Uh, it it let, excuse me, it's past time for something to be done. The people in authority in this state are gonna have to do something.
Well, and along those same lines, when I started to work at the road department, I started in eighty-seven. We were maintaining eight hundred and fifty miles of unpaid roads. We got that number down to about three hundred miles at one point in time. That number's back up to about three hundred and fifty or sixty with another fifty that needs to be uh turned back into an unpaid road because they're basically or they're beyond uh, they're past uh repairing. Within ten years, we may very well be getting close to having eight hundred and fifty miles of unpaid roads again because they're not gonna last forever. And as I said, each year, we're gonna lose more and more and more of them if something's not done. Uh, we felt like years ago, we started this in really in two thousand, started trying to upgrade some of our roads and get them paid. And we felt like the savings, what we were spending on uh trying to maintain on this unpaid, might offset the cost. But what happened was revenue did not continue to increase. Costs continued to uh increase every year. So, uh, the savings we realized was not near enough to offset anything. It was uh and really since about oh seven, we've been regressing, as you said, and we've been losing roads. And we'll continue to. Uh, you know, by writing through your district, how many you've got that that are past the point of being able to repair them. There's, you can't patch them. There's not, there's nothing left to work with. Uh, so.
Gentlemen, we appreciate your comments and uh I'm sure that everyone else here has feel some way about the problem. We've all spoken numerous times to numerous groups throughout the county and throughout the state as well. So, in the uh, we need to to move on, I'm afraid, at this point.
Yeah.
No, I really appreciate all the information, but one one thing I will emphasize is uh just to our question numerous times, the perception by the public is that the counties receive more than enough funds to take care of these problems. Well, if you saw that we receive approximately twenty million dollars a year, you would you would think that was the truth. Unfortunately, as we emphasize time again, over ninety percent of that money is earmarked for other uses and can't be spent on the things that we need to do to improve the second interruption bridges and infrastructure. And that can only be addressed by, at this point, by these revenues. So, I encourage people to to look at the broad picture. So, uh, definitely don't please, sir.
Uh, surplus equipment, we have uh three items that we're gonna be setting. I've sent back the inventory numbers on these. It's the two old Volvo trucks to be replaced. And then an old one-ton truck that uh we don't use anymore. We need to declare these surplus that we sold with the auction next month.
I entertain a motion that we declare the equipment as surplus presented by Mr. Roll.
Amen.
There's a motion by Mr. Wood and a second by Mr. Black. Those in favor, signify the saying aye. opposed, the like sign. Motion is carried. Personnel, please.
Uh, we have hired a in the process of hiring a part-time worker to uh to help. One thing is to do them right away is uh helping with our trucks, trying to get these ready uh to go to the auction. Chris Harpy, I'd like to recommend we hire him.
Okay, a motion. We approve the hiring of Mr. Harpy for the road department.
Amen.
Second by Mr. Black, motion by Mr. Westbrook, second by Mr. Black. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last comment concerning the road department. I'd like people to uh to understand that while your your personnel does have definitive hours that they work, they're basically on call twenty-four seven. And they're out there all the time. Just because it may be raining one day and they can't work on the roads, doesn't mean they won't be working in the weekend in the rain if road gets closed. So, you know, all of us basically, those of us sitting up here too, we're on call as well. So, it's no different from the sheriff's department, emergency management, people that work in DC gas, awarding board, we're all on call. Just because we're not working all the time, doesn't mean we're not available if necessary. Thank you, sir. And gentlemen, we appreciate the review.
Thank you.
Engineering, Mr. Luke.
Thank you. Um, these are two separate items here that we're sitting here together, but uh they will be separate. First is the County Engineers Association Annual Conference has been scheduled for May seventh at eight uh in Orange Beach. And I'd like to request permission for myself and Mr. Wallace to attend this conference.
Have a motion on Mr. uh Luke's request.
Amen.
Second.
Second.
motion by Mr. Westbrook, second by Mr. Wood. All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the like sign. Motion is carried. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The H triple R resolution back in uh July of last year uh made application to the state for some additional federal funds. This is the High Risk Rural Roads Program. It's a a safety program within federal highway that uh unfortunately, like a lot of the the funding is it's a reactive funding and not a proactive. The the reason of this being made available now is that the fatality rate on rural roads has increased over the previous two years. So, anytime there's an increase from the past two years, they release a set amount of funds that can go towards safety type projects. One, one of the things that that they allow is unshielded bridge ends. Wherever you have a bridge, it may have uh existing guard rail, but no end treatments, uh those are made available. Fortunately, we don't have a whole lot of fatality accidents, you know, they they come and they go. Uh, we're very fortunate in that, but uh we do have some situations where we could meet this criteria. And so, we we did make application. We were approved for um, let's see, total total estimate was just over a hundred twenty-five thousand. Uh, this is a ninety-ten funding split, so ninety percent of that is is federal. It's a hundred twelve thousand, eight forty-five sixty is the federal amount that's been set aside. We've been approved for for these projects, for these two sites. And uh, so we have to go through the normal uh project initiation process. Uh, so I would ask that the commission pass a resolution notifying the state of our intent to uh apply for these federal funds for two sites. One's on a bridge on County Road twenty-four, it's Carom Creek. And uh, one on County Road fifty-one, bridge at Big Wheels Creek.
Do I have a motion to, on Mr. Luke's request concerning the resolution?
Amen.
Up to Mr. Westbrook, second by Mr. Black. Those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your effort. So, the life several weeks as well. High Falls Board Appointments, uh, we have uh two. First, uh, Mr. Black and second be Mr. Westbrook.
I'd like to make a motion to uh appoint Tim Manis as uh board director.
All right, Mr. Manis and Mr. Westbrook, you have an appointment as well.
We're gonna uh reappoint uh Mr. Max Smith uh to the board as well.
They have a motion to uh appoint Mr. Manis as per Mr. Black and reappoint Mr. Smith to the High Falls Board, Park Board. Motion by Mr. Wood, and I suspect since then, we didn't have an appointment. Is there a second by Mr. Black? I think that's appropriate. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the people who are willing to serve on this particular board as well. I know they was out of order, but we were missing them under the commission of this thing. Nine-one-one Board Appointments, Mr. Black.
I'd like to make a motion to uh appoint Anthony Clifton to the board. His previous commitments, he was unable to attend today and.
Uh, okay, a motion by Mr. Black to appoint Mr. Anthony Clifton to the nine-one-one board. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Peaks Corner Fire Protection Board, uh, excuse me, sorry about that. Lake Community Fire Protection Board Appointments, Mr. Black.
Uh, yes, I'd like to reappoint uh Hugh Phillips to the the board. He is already a director of Secretary of Treasury. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll say that.
Note, this is a six-year term. Those in favor, signify the appointment, signify the saying aye. Motion is passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Next would be the Peaks Corner Fire Protection Board to reappoint, Mr. Westbrook.
Um, Mr. uh Robert Harris uh been recommended to um be reappointed as chairman of the Peaks Corner Fire Department. So, I might add a motion to to refer that.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Wood. All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris.
As Chairman of the Peaks Corner Fire Protection Board, thirty-sixth of the year now. Motion is carried. I can tell this has been a long meeting.
Sorry, you're looking to combine that on me, I know.
Ladies and gentlemen, I I am greatly sure and I pray that the cover photo that connects to me, to be able to hurt these cats. But uh, thank you for uh being with us today. And we do want to, everyone to understand that we are very much concerned that if we are do do not receive some additional funding to do a better job trying to maintain the roads and bridges in this county that unfortunately, I'm afraid that the number of people killed on these roads is going to increase as well. It is a safety issue now, uh, been a safety issue, but it's getting worse as we do. I'm not saying that the condition has contributed to the increase in the number of deaths, but it's not inconceivable that it has as well. So, anything that you uh can do to promote this particular um observation or at least the objective about the consideration of the passage of additional funding, we appreciate. With uh, are there any further, anything further to be said? Our next meeting will be on March the twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
That adjourned.